I call to order this meeting of the Uni-County Planning Board on this Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015. Board members, you've all had an opportunity to look at the agenda that was mailed to you. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
No.
If not, do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I don't believe we had a copy of the minutes included in our pack.
Right.
Yes, well, Mr. Chairman, we got mixed up and so Pam will have those at our next meeting.
Alright.
Pam is also the secretary for the board adjustment now and so we got it mixed up, so we will have them at the update by our next meeting.
Alright. No problem, no problem. That's the case then, we will move from item number four to item number five. And this is a conditional rezoning petition number fifteen dash zero three from Moore Farms, Active Adult Community. They're requesting a rezoning classification from R forty to a master plan development containing one hundred sixteen point eleven acres. At this time, do we have Lee Jensen, would you like to come forward and speak to this?
Yes, sir. The thing I'm going to do is pull up a aerial or a parcel map of where this actually is. Actually, let me work with these lights on a little bit so you guys can, so people in the audience can see this a little bit better because it's a little hard to see. There we go. Should be a little bit better. Can y'all see that?
Okay.
This piece of property is on Waxaw Indian Trail Road. It's kind of right in between the town of Wesley Chapel and Indian Trail. I'll be there in just a second. So it's these properties right in here. It's several different parcels, so it's not, it's not all contained in one, in one piece. There are several different properties there. And I'll go ahead and pull up the, and I can go back and forth, so if you want to see something on the, on the GIS map, just let me know. This is the concept plan, it's being proposed. What are they? Should be probably about. Wait for it. And did, you guys, I'm not sure, did you get a copy of the concept plan in your package? You did? Okay. Alright. So generally, that's it. I can zoom in and out, kind of like that, if you want to get in a little bit closer. But this, like I said, it's, it's in between the towns of Indian Trail and Wesley Chapel, along Waxaw Indian Trail Road, just to the south of it, if you're familiar, there's a subdivision down there called Hunter's Point. So that's, that's just across the creek, right, right here. That's, that's the, I guess that's the west side of Hunter's Point, and then the east side of Hunter's Point is just below, the subdivision is down here. This little road here is one of the furthest westerly points of Brandon Oaks, just, just to kind of give you some geographic perspective as to where that is. The, the property right now is currently vacant, actually, it's not completely vacant. There's, I think, a couple houses on the property. And if you've ever traveled down the road, you'll probably, you may know, there's like a pecan grove of trees right there, so that's kind of a good reference point as, as well. But the property right now is currently, you know, a couple houses, the majority of it's vacant, and it's a tree farm, I believe it is. They submitted this application on September fourteenth. The proposed zoning district is the Master Plan Development District, which is a conditional district. It's for two hundred and fifty-seven, it's a two hundred and fifty-seven lot age-restricted community. So, so will be age-restricted, so it's, it's being marketed to, basically, people that are over retirement age that, that, you know, would move in. Several different housing products, that's the way it would qualify under MPD, so it's not all single-family. There'll be some single, it's a single-family product, but there'll be different types. So some of them are more of a traditional single-family, more of a, some of them are a patio home, and then up at the top, you have some that are more of a townhome type product. So a different mix of housing styles for different, folks that, some folks may still want a single-family, some may want more of a townhome, so it gives a mix of opportunities there. Lots of trails throughout the neighborhood. I think over half the, the site is this common area. Lots of trails that connect the, the site sidewalks, and there will be an amenities area that, you know, may have a clubhouse, or, you know, a pergola, or something like Let's see, the, as far as plan consistency goes, this area is shown on the, our comprehensive plan as a future mixed residential area. This is actually kind of the dividing line here between the mixed residential and single-family. This, this, is this consistent with that mixed residential category? What, what that category talks about is a mix of housing styles for different, for different lifestyles of folks. So this would fit in the category of, you know, more of a retirement community type Some of the features of the neighborhood, it has, you know, like I said, it has an amenities area that will support the neighborhood residents. There will be an entry feature off of Waxaw Indian Trail Road, see what kind of our cursor is, kind of over that little area. I believe that's going to be a barn, a drive-through barn, it's just an entry feature off, off the road. They'll provide interconnected trails within the neighborhood, and it's also going to connect to the future Carolina Thread Trails, kind of along this creek here and this creek here, two different portions. A mix of lifestyle, a mix of housing styles to support different, different lifestyles. They're going to preserve the existing pecan grove off of Waxaw Indian Trail Road, and one of the other features of it, it's kind of hard to see from the site plan, but there's a stubout right there, and another stubout there. What that will do...
Okay, where are you pointing to?
I'm sorry, probably hard to see.
Yeah.
Where those arrows are.
Yeah.
So where those arrows are.
It's really difficult to see.
There you go. So those arrows kind of point down to, to two stubouts, and what the hope there is, the property that those connect into is possibly the subject of, of some stuff that Indian Trail. The proposal there is to connect those roads together. That will eventually create, the transportation plan calls it a, I think Indian Trail's transportation plan calls it a boulevard. It's, it's not really a boulevard because it's not a direct connection, but it will provide a cross-connection all the way over to Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, which is, which is good, you know, to move traffic from this neighborhood, you know, if they're going to Harris Teeter up at Sun Valley instead of going up here and around, they can, they can just shoot over. So, and that's one of the things that's identified, I believe, on Indian Trail's transportation plan. I'm not sure if it's on ours or not, but I know it's on the town of Indian Trail, so it implements one of those, one of those policies. There's a community meeting that was held on October the fifteenth at Abundant Life Church, which was formerly Hardest Grove Baptist Church, it's a Blanche Circle, it's just north of this property. Basically, you know, we, we hold these community meetings to solicit input from the neighborhood. We notify all the adjacent residents, and we also notified, or we didn't, in this case the developer did, notified all the adjacent residents plus the towns of Wesley Chapel and Indian Trail, and the homeowners' associations of Hunter's Point and Brandon Oaks. We had several folks from Hunter's Point come out. I attended the meeting just to kind of see what was going on. Several folks from Hunter's Point came out. No real major concerns were raised during the meeting. One resident didn't want to make sure that the development, that the development was not going to increase their taxes, and it was not going to change their school location, which that's, the school location is determined by Uni-County Public Schools. We don't have, these rezonings don't, don't, you know, change the school location, and these rezonings won't really, they won't raise their lower taxes, that's determined by the tax rate we set up at the county commissioner. A lot of discussion focused on how much the houses were going to cost, the size, those kind of things, and, and an opportunity came out, one, a couple residents, I think, talked about possibly interconnecting the trails that currently existed at Hunter's Point over to the trails here. So that's not really a concern, it was more of an opportunity, if you will. As I said, the comprehensive plan, based on land use, future land use map, this does fit within mixed residential, this is consistent with, with that category. A few other areas that this, this plan, proposed rezoning would support, several of the strategies in the comp plan. One is the Live one point zero, which is, this proposed conditional district will offer a mix of residential housing types to support a growing and increasingly diverse population. Live three point oh, the proposed development based design guidelines emphasize walkability, connectivity, and park and green road creation. Move, it provides, they, the developers have agreed to provide the county easements for the future construction of the Carolina Thread Trail. And Hell four point oh, it provides easements again for the Carolina Thread Trail, as well as provides an interconnected network of trails and sidewalks throughout the neighborhood. Based on those factors, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request. There are several conditions that, that were incorporated, I'll let John talk about some of those conditions when he gets up. We will incorporate all of the proposed conditions, basically establishing some minimum square footages. I believe the townhomes are fourteen hundred, and the single families are sixteen, I believe that's right?
Yes, sir.
So it establishes some, some design guidelines for how the houses would look. So there's a lot of that, and we'll incorporate all that within the approval as well. That will become part of the conditional zoning district if it's approved. Staff is recommending approval, like I said. One of the, bit of information, I kind of want to go over with you, and I had thought that this was included in your agenda packets, but I don't think it was, and I didn't, and unfortunately, since I thought it was in there, I didn't make copies. I'm, I'm going to run through this really quick. This is a, a document that the board of county commissioners wanted us, wanted planning staff to, we wanted, they wanted us to do a cost-benefit analysis on residential rezonings. So the cost-benefit analysis was put together, and we're basically just using the information that's in the cost-benefit analysis to come up with, you know, is this a, is this a benefit to the county, or is it a, or is it a, do we gain money, or do we lose money, basically? This is based on census numbers, twenty thirteen census data, and there's some information, I think, gleaned from some of the other departments about how they, how their operational, how they work. Basically, we're looking at Sheriff's Department, schools, the libraries, parks and rec, the tax potential, and then Uni-County Public Utilities. And as I go through this, and again, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it, but as I go through it, I kind of tell you how, how some of these numbers work. What we did was, we looked at, if this was developed under R forty zoning, this is what it would do. If it was developed under what's been proposed, this is what it would do. So, under R forty zoning, and the method we used for this was, under R forty zoning, we basically take ten percent off the total lot acreage to account for utilities right away, things like that. That's just a general number that you, a lot of air, you can't come up with an individual scenario for each development, so ten percent is kind of an average number. Based on ten percent, or based on that ten percent factor, in R forty, this, this total site would yield about a hundred and seven lots. Under the MPD, this is pretty easy to propose, two hundred and fifty-seven, so that, that was an easy number to get. As far as police protection goes, the demand for a new hundred and seven lot subdivision is point three five three officers. For the MPD, it's point eight four eight officers. That number came from the sheriff's office, and that came from the operating budget, and divided by the number of occupied households in Uni-County, is how they came up with that. That's kind of how we came, how that factor was arrived at. Oh, and then the average cost for Uni-County Service Office Services per home is three hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents. So you basically take that number, multiply it by three hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents, and that's how you get the number of officers. The Uni-County library system, for an R forty household, it will generate about a hundred and twenty-eight point four new cardholders. For this rezoning, it will generate about three hundred and eight point four householders. The way that number was arrived at, you have eighty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-seven householders, and you divide that by the number of households, you basically end up with one point two library cardholders per Uni-County home. So that's kind of where that number, that number comes from. So, so that, that's your, your library comparison. For parks and rec, this will generate, R forty development would generate a demand of about one two, one point eight two acres of new parks. This will be four point three seven acres of new parks. That number is basically taking the current acreage of, or the current budget, dividing it by the number of occupied households, and then taking that number and multiplying it by the cost per acre of parks, which is basically taking the existing acreage of parks and dividing it by the number of households, or dividing it by the budget. So that's how you arrive at that number. The abhorrent tax potential of R forty development of a hundred and seven homes is about a hundred and ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-four cents. Under this MPD, the tax value would be about four hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-five cents. Now, let me tell you the way we arrived at that number. That number is based on homes that, we extracted homes just within the Sun Valley Cluster because your school district is a big determinant of home value. So we pulled homes from the Sun Valley Cluster, we only looked at homes with a minimum of fifteen hundred because these were, they set a minimum of fourteen owned townhomes, sixteen owned single families, so we took the middle, because this fifteen hundred square foot that we pulled included single families, patio homes, included all homes, it wasn't just single families, so included townhomes and all that. We also set a minimum lot size of half an acre because we included land and home value. So, you know, if you had a large lot, that, that would, that would, you know, that would cause your numbers to be a little bit off. We also set a year, so these, it's only included years built, or homes built after the year two thousand. Basically, as, as your homes get older, they depreciate faster. The, the home value, not the land value, but the home value depreciates, they're not worth as much as newer homes. Well, these will be newer homes, so they'll have a higher value. So, so that, that's, that's how that number was arrived at. So take that for what it's worth. The Uni-County Public Utilities, a hundred and seven lot, R forty, would generate a demand of about thirty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-three point two gallons per day. This would generate about ninety-one thousand nine hundred and three point two gallons per day of flow into the Uni-County services. For schools, this is an age-restricted community, so the reason you can age-restrict is there's a clause in the, I believe it's the Fair Housing Act, that it's the only way that you can restrict housing, and it's for fifty-five-plus communities. You can't restrict housing based on any other method, that's the only way you can do it. And they will do that under this method, this will be age-restricted. So basically, for, for schools, there's not a good model to use for an age-restricted community. Generally speaking, just from speaking with other people that have dealt with this, it has a negligible impact on schools. Generally, kids don't live in these neighborhoods, so you really don't have an impact on schools. So, for the school function, it's basically used as zero. I did run the analysis based on, if this were a regular subdivision, that was not If you want me to, I'll go over it, if you want me to skip over that I want, before we want to hear it. I'm saying the yes, I'll go ahead and say it. For a hundred and seven lot development, it would generate a demand of about sixty-six point three four students. For a two hundred and fifty-seven lot, single-family neighborhood, it would generate a demand of about a hundred and fifty-nine point three four students. Again, that's for a non-age-restricted community. That number was arrived by looking at the, again, the total number of occupied households, and then looking at the Uni-County local allocation, which is two thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. And you basically, that's how you end up with, well, the, the generation rate is point six two, I'm sorry, I should have said that. So the generation rate was point six two, and then you, based on those demands, you multiply those numbers by twenty-four thirty-two, and you arrive at the total value, or value for what the impact, these are called, of the dollar. So at the end of the day, when you look at this, based on, you have an increase in abhorrent tax revenue of about two sixty-eight, one hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and eleven cents. If you subtract that, or you subtract the county's expenses based on police, libraries, parks, and those things, you end up with, you can expect an overall revenue gain of about a hundred and ninety-six thousand five hundred and forty dollars and fifty-one cents. Now, obviously, if this was not age-restricted and you added schools, it would be on the negative side. But since it's age-restricted, you know, we anticipate that, you know, it should generate additional revenues for the county. Again, this is something that the county commissioners wanted us to provide them for all residential rezonings, we thought that if we were providing them, we should probably provide it to you guys as well.
Let me kind of talk about that for just a minute. One thing I want to stress to, to the board, and I stressed this to the commissioners as well, is that there are a lot of assumptions in this. We have to make assumptions on square footage, and developer will give you their minimum, and say, well, the minimum for this type of house is fifteen hundred square feet, but that doesn't mean that's going to be the only product they build. They may very well build a number of two thousand square foot homes, and so it's impossible for us to give you an accurate number without knowing exactly how many two thousand square foot homes versus fifteen hundred square foot homes they're going to build, and no developer's going to give you that information, because they really don't know. They're, they're going to say, my minimum's this, and, and I'm going to build whatever the market will let me build, but I won't go below that. So when we're talking about revenues and expenses, we have to make some assumptions, and we recognize those assumptions are based on an average or a minimum. So the development community may not necessarily like the information we're providing, but we want the board to understand, you shouldn't use this to make your definitive decision. This is merely just some basic data of possible outcomes. This is not the actual outcome of what this development will create. It may very well generate more revenue than we say it will generate, because we don't know the number and the size of houses in there. So it was difficult for us to give you a definitive number, but at least giving you some basic number for you to look at and a possible impact. And I stressed that to the commissioners, and they understand, without a lot more detail from the developer upfront, it's impossible for us to give you really hard numbers. So just be aware, it's a mechanism and a tool for you to think about, but, but please don't base your entire decision on that information.
And a couple things that I forgot to mention during my staff analysis, that I've just found out today, I'm supposed to actually, I'm in my staff analysis. Joe Ledger, transportation planner, received an updated transportation, shopping impact analysis, and he reviewed it, and he's, he's okay with it, he's kind of signed off on it. And basically, John, I don't know if you've seen this or not, but I, I believe that they're going to have a left end off of, if you're heading south on Waxaw Indian Trail Road, there'll be a left end, is that what you're saying?
That's correct, yes.
And then out, I believe they recommended a right in, left out of the neighborhood.
Correct.
So, and, and we're comfortable with that, the fact that's, I think the right in, right out of the neighborhood was one of the things that Joe had kind of asked for, and, and the left end should, should help relieve any backup caused by, by the development. So we, we look at those as positives. And again, you know, based on the community meeting, based on the comp plan, and just based on the overall design, I mean, you know, there's, there's a good buffer between those existing homes there, there's a good buffer between Brandon Oaks, which is over here, which you can't really see, but it's buffered by this, this common area. Interconnectivity of trails, the overall amenities provided in the neighborhood, we think it's a, and basically, again, based on the plan, based on, you know, the support the plan provides to a lot of the strategies in, in our comp plan, staff, staff is recommending approval.
Will those road modifications be at both entrances, or just the main entrance?
It'll, it'll be just at the main, I believe the second road, John, was a right in, right out. Yes, so, so this second entrance, gosh, I can't even see it, which is the barn, kind of, right there, that'll be a right in, right out. So if you're, if you're leaving the community on this road, you'll only be able to turn right, you will not be able to make a left turn. If you're heading this way, you'll only be able to turn right in, so you won't be able to head this way. So most traffic will probably use the main entrance, but, you know, some portion of it will probably use this. And we also had them look at, you know, just a future scenario where, and I believe they looked at this, and, actually, I forgot to ask Joe about this, so I retract that statement. We talked about possibly, you know, having them look at, you know, the pattern on this if this road is, is built, if that project's approved, and you need a trail and that road's built, but...
You're talking about the connectivity?
The connectivity. So we, we may not, they may not have addressed that in the, in the TIA, which is actually probably even better, because if, if they addressed all the traffic coming out on this road, and that's what they came up with, and that's great, if this connection's ever built, and some of that traffic will, will go that way, at any rate. Anybody have any more questions for me, or?
No, but I liked the analysis. I did. I think it puts a quantitative twist on everything. I wish we had it on all of our future.
Yeah, you're, Waxaw, the main entrance here, which is up at the top, you're going to have a left in and a left out out there as well?
It's full movement.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so leaving the neighborhood, there'll be a dedicated right lane, a dedicated left lane, and then an entry. So heading south, if you're on Waxaw Indian Trail Road, heading south, there'll be a dedicated left turn lane into the neighborhood.
Okay. I guess one of the things that I'm thinking of, and obviously, the adjacent jurisdiction's Indian Trail, so it's, you know, not part of this planning board, but if you kind of move towards Brandon Oaks, where the, the two outlets are going to connect here?
Which Brandon Oaks is going to be over here.
Yeah, okay.
So it's off of, it's off of Wesley Chapel Stouts.
Right.
And actually, sort of through Holly Park.
Right.
But then you've got, it also has an exit right by the Harris Teeter on, on Goldman Road, and then at the stoplight.
Well, and, and, you know, I guess my, my concern is on that, that main road. You're going to be cut, yeah, you're going to be coming down Waxaw Indian Trail, and you're feeding a whole bunch of things to the west that are not going to be able to go over to that heavily...
You're talking about cut-through traffic?
Yeah.
The, the way, and I wish I had a copy of the plan that had been submitted to Indian Trail. The way it's designed, it's not, it's not designed as a cut-through road. You would honestly have... You would honestly have to know that it was there, because basically, you would come down this road, and this connects into the neighborhood.
Uh huh.
It actually stops into another road. You'd have to make a right turn, and I believe maybe another left turn, to actually get at it. So, it's not very conducive to cut-through traffic. It's really more conducive to what I would consider to be local traffic. Indian Trail, if they maintain roads, I would assume they would probably put some kind of traffic calming device in. And again, this is something that was identified on Indian Trail's thoroughfare plan. They want this connection. This is not something that they don't, that is, you know, against something, you know, any plans that Indian Trail has. We received comments back from the town of Indian Trail. We didn't receive any from Wesley Chapel, although I did talk to Bill Dustin. Indian Trail's comments were, "Please ensure that these roads are aligned during designer review." Like, basically, when this comes to us as a subdivision, and we go through, and, you know, go through the detailed engineering, Indian Trail wants these roads to align. And so, that was their, one of their main comments.
Well, you know, I'm just trying to think back to the comprehensive plan or the 2045 plan that we have. You know, what are, you know, this is an opportunity, I get, this is a conditional zoning application, so we can put various conditions on that.
Yes.
So, you know, I mean, we talk about having these roadway systems or these interconnected systems with, you know, either a parkway setting, or a roadway with a designated bike lane inside of it, you know, those kind of things. And I think this is a good opportunity, because if you're going to have a connection from Wesley, or from Waxaw Indian Trail, basically, running along the south side of the Brandon Oaks between, and I don't know if you've come down Wesley Chapel Stouts towards the roundabout over that gold mine, just as you come over that hill, that's a kind of funky to go into that development there. Then you come over that hill, and just on the south side of Brandon Oaks, you'll have, it appears, where the road is going to come out and join that backside of Brandon Oaks and head into Wesley. It might be, you know, if we have the opportunity to start creating those kinds of systems where we have the designated bike path, or a median parkway throughout this road, you know, you have the parkway, it's going to slow down traffic, you know, just as the design of it does. You know, I see that there's, houses are going to be on there, so that might, you know, put an issue into it for the left turns and all that other stuff. But, you know, that would be my suggestion, is that, you know, we look at the design of that road, at least that main road that's coming through the development, that's going to have an access point. You'll have all that traffic from the western side over on Wesley Chapel, they're going to come to the theater, instead of going up to Monroe, or down to Potter, and then over. You know, that's, whether you make one left or two lefts, I know me, I'd probably go that way, you know? Instead of trying to go all the way down to Potter, or all the way back up to Monroe, I'd come around that way and make my left out, and I'm up at the theaters. So, you know, I mean, that's just my thought, is, you know, we developed these comprehensive plans, or these 2045 comprehensive plans, with all these nice pictures in them, of these roadways that have the bike lanes, and I appreciate that this community's going to have all these walking trails and the interconnectivity to the trails. And why not just create an additional benefit, maybe a little selfish for some, you know, get bikers to actually want to use that thoroughly?
And I think, you know, whatever happens with this road, it would need to be consistent with what Indian Trail is doing. You know, if Indian Trail, you know, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, but, you know, if Indian Trail, if we said this road needs to have, you know, a parkway setting and bike lanes on either side, and Indian Trail says, "Well, no, this is just going to be just a regular, you know, road," then it really doesn't make a lot of sense. And I think, from what Indian Trail's perspective is, and again, I wish I had the plan, but there are lots running directly on this road, on the Indian Trail plan. So, you know, I don't think it's really intended, this, in their master plan, in their transportation plan, this is not intended to be a boulevard-type road. They call it a thoroughfare, but when you look at what's in the plan, and what they're talking about, it's really not a thoroughfare. It's more of just a, it's a good connection between these two roads. And, yeah, I'm sure you will, you will get some cut-through traffic, you always do. But it's really not designed for a lot of cut-through traffic.
I think our issue is that we don't control beyond our bounds.
Right, sure.
And so, you know, I would certainly think that, you know, your suggestion has merit, but if Indian Trail's not willing to go along with that same concept, us making it a parkway won't be really conducive. So, I think really what we're working with is, what is Indian Trail's plan, because that's their portion beyond that. And if they don't want a parkway, when we're really kind of stuck with making it be consistent with what their design's going to be.
Right. But by the same token, if you develop a plan that allows for this, perhaps Indian Trail will look at that and say, "Hey, you know what, that's not a bad idea." And the reality is, you're going to get cut-through traffic on this area. I mean, having driven both of these roads numerous times in different parts of the day, you're not going to avoid traffic that's going to say, "Hey, there's a shorter way to get from one side to the other," which I think is a fairly common issue. For that reason, I also look at these houses that are facing this road, and it appears to be, I can't read the writing on that road, but it appears to be a larger road than a standard two-lane, so it's a 60...
Sixty-foot cross section.
Okay.
And that's based on DOT's criteria. They look at this as more of a collector's group. So, for collector's groups, they say, "It's got to be a 60-foot right away." So, I would, I would say that this, as a cut-through, would be almost akin to cutting through Holly Park over to Brandon Oaks to get from...
Wesley Chapel Stouts.
Wesley Chapel Stouts over to Old Monroe. And generally, that's not going to save you any time.
No, but...
I've tried to do it.
But if you, but if you look at it around Rush Hour, where you see all that traffic that's coming down...
I've tried it.
There's a lot of traffic that will take that road, just because they're continuing to move.
Because they continue to move.
Right. They're not saving any time, but they still do it. Human nature is, "Hey, as long as I'm moving, I'm okay."
Yeah. And it is, and the Brandon Oaks parkway is designed, it is a parkway. There's no lots that front on that, so you can't get higher speeds. So, you know, but you're right, you are moving, but, you know, from a time standpoint, I think this would be akin to something like that. You've got to make a lot of turns, I don't know.
And this is obviously the developer representative's teeter, in case you have a question.
And I think John's going to do a quick one.
He may have a presentation.
Do you have any more questions for Lee? If not, we would like to hear from the developer presentation, please. Thank you for your patience so far.
No problem.
My name is John Ross with Eagle Engineering. I am here tonight representing the petitioner for this rezoning petition. Let me extend apologies. Mr. Steve Pitts, who was the actual owner, one of the owners of the property, called late this afternoon, and due to health reasons, he could not be here this evening, but he did ask that I extend his apologies in that regard. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to say thank you for your time this evening. I'd also like to extend my thanks to Mr. Matthews, Mr. Black, and Mr. Lee for helping us through this process. It's been a delight working with the county staff. We very much appreciate what they do for us. I don't want to replicate a lot of information that Lee has presented. I do want to try to give, answer any questions that may exist out there. But if you'll just bear with me just a moment, let me give you a little bit of an overview of the project. The Moore Farms community is a portion of the land that has been in the Moore family for five generations, and is currently utilized for agricultural purposes. It is the intent of the team, the development team, to move the Moore Farms project forward as an active, adult, age-restricted community. The active adult community will be developed and restricted toward adults 55 years and older, and there are federal guidelines that establish that. Within this demographic, there are a growing number of people that desire to limit their commitment to living space and associated property maintenance, i.e. lawn care, landscaping, and instead focus more on enjoying the active lifestyle outside the home. It is also more common for these citizens to desire to conserve financial resources for life events rather than maintenance of a primary residence. Lee has presented the plan, and I can point better with this pointer than I can with this mouse. If you can bear with me just a moment, Lee, I think if I push Control and scroll in, there we go, we can zoom just a little bit. So, yes, key points of this site, let me, if I could, let me go back to the transportation issue. We do, in fact, have the concept plans. We've actually done work for the group on the property adjacent to this site. It's a group out of Atlanta called the Turnstone Group. I believe they currently now have it under contract with another development group, so we're not involved with the project, but I've had the adjoining plans for a couple years in our possession. And we have aligned the two points of access with those plans, and it's been our intent and goal to match up the 60-foot right-of-way coming through their property onto ours with what we have proposed here. Let me also iterate that their access from Wesley Chapel Stouts Road actually is Phase Three of what is the Sheridan Development, Sheridan Development. So, it comes in Indian Trail, cuts across the corner of Wesley Chapel, back into Indian Trail, across the floodplain, across an overhead power easement, and then into this piece of the property, and then into what would be our property. So, again, our goal has always been connect our right-of-way, our proposed thoroughfare right-of-way with what they have at the location and at the width. So, we're trying to be consistent with those plans, and again, we do have those in our possession.
Are you taking it at the, on the 74 side of Sheridan, or down on the Kings Grant side?
It's the far northern side, it's close to Sun, yeah, the north side, so it'd be the Sun Valley side. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, there's a very tiny strip of the Sheridan Development that is actually a, instead of being Phase Three Sheridan, it is a phase of what's the Hallthorne property. I don't know what the name of that may be now, but yes, sir, it is that.
Okay.
So, the Moore Farm residence, access into the Moore Farm will be by the pecan grove that we discussed, and across a barn entrance. I'm going to get to another file to show you where our design, there we go, on the screen behind you. This is actually a barn that exists on Ottawa Road, just outside of Matthew, or just before you get to Matthews on the way into Charlotte. And this has been our goal here. We want to create a feel to where, as you leave Waxaw Indian Trail Road, and you enter into this, through this barn, into the Moore Farms community, you're leaving the stresses of everything outside and moving into a new place, and we feel like this barn will assist us with creating that level of separation. Yes, we recognize this will be a private segment of road. Yes, we recognize we'll have to accommodate emergency response vehicles, but I think that's a great signature move for this community. Beyond the barn, one would enter the community, given the sense of a place and time far removed from the stress of modern life. This element would be created through the preservation of natural features, the integration of amenities, and the establishment of architectural themes throughout the project. The site is bounded by the Davis Mine Creek and the Price Mill Creek to the south and to the east. The future Carolina Threetree will extend across each of these reaches of the project site, and the Moore Farm community will provide easements and future connectivity to the Carolina Threetree in these locations. There are a series of ponds and lakes across the property that will provide opportunities for fishing, for boating, or just destination points for times of quiet reflection. As a part of the Moore Farm master plan development, a variety of amenities are planned throughout the site. A dedicated amenities area is planned for group and community activities, and that's what's shown in pink at the top, the main entrance into the site. This area will include indoor and outdoor spaces. The facility planned for this area will have an indoor area for fitness and wellness, as well as open spaces for community gatherings, a business center, perhaps a community library, audiovisual room, or a game room. Within this dedicated area, there will also be a lawn for outdoor group gatherings, such as bocce ball, croquet, receptions, or community picnics. Within the residential portion of the site, right in the center on the top of this knoll here, there's planned a community garden, which allows residents to work together in activities that will provide personal rewards for their efforts. This project is focused on offering a variety of lot sizes and residential options, with architectural designs focused on the needs and desires of the projected homeowners. Architectural components will establish a theme of the Moore Farm community, and will provide a unified development between the different sizes and types of homes offered. Common landscapes areas will be established, and areas of natural vegetation will be protected to maximize green space within the community. And let me again iterate that just over 50% of the total project acreage will be dedicated as open space. So, where we are in the process so far, we've submitted our conditional zoning application. We've been through pre-submitting meetings with the staff. We've had the complete zoning petition. We've had several of the county offices report, respond, review, and report. We have conducted a field review with DOT as far as our two driveway locations, and that's how we know that the southern drive will be the right in, right out, and we're committed to that. The northern drive will be the full motion, and we do have the traffic study in its final format that has been just approved today for our access points. We do have sketch plan approval from Union County Public Works, committing to the water and sewer allocation for the site. We have received review comments from Stormwater, addressed those, and have a response back that we are okay with those comments. We've also had discussions and coordination with the fire marshal as far as access throughout the site for emergency response vehicles. As Mr. Jensen pointed out, we did have a community meeting on October 15th, and I believe there were a total of 10 attendees, two from my office, one of the owners were there, the developer representative was there, and Mr. Jensen was there, which left five additional neighbors there as well. There were a few discussion points, Lee, that I'd like to iterate if I could, I think, pertinent information for this group as well. One question was, will the existing residents shown on the concept plan remain or be removed? And that is the residence that is the big green fronting on Waxaw Indian Trail Road. That is the Pitt residence. As long as the Pitt family wants to live there, we want to accommodate that. They've made it clear that their intent is to move into the community. So, at the appropriate time, that residence would actually be removed, and that's why you see the inset block up above. That'll allow for a total of 10 more lots. Those numbers are included in our overall numbers and our density counts as well. So, what we would end up with is a number of lots that actually front, face back toward Waxaw Indian Trail Road, look through the grove of pecan trees, and there would be a pedestrian path meandering through the trees between the lots fronts and Waxaw Indian Trail Road. We discussed the barn entrance, so I won't deliberate on that any further. Another question at the community meeting, what were the anticipated home prices? The Moore Farms community will be developed with an active, adult theme, and a focus on maintenance-free lifestyle. Home prices for the attached single-family homes, that would be the townhouses, the attached single-family homes will range from $260,000 to $300,000. The single-family homes are expected to range from $290,000 to $400,000 plus. Another question, are there any water or sewer issues? The answer, no, Public Works has approved the sketch plan, recognizing we don't have allocation until tap fees and capacity fees are paid, but we are where we need to be in the process at this point to secure that allocation. And then the final one, would there be connectivity between the trails and Moore Farms in Hunter's Point? And our development team is committed that we will work closely with the Hunter's Point community, and if there are ways that we can provide stub outs for trails within our system that they could use, it certainly would benefit to both of the communities. The overall theme of the discussions, once most people in Hunter's Point realize that the closest house in our community and their community are about 450 feet apart through floodplain, undisturbed buffer, I think the concerns were pretty well mitigated. It's a little farther than that, actually, for the Brandon Oaks side as well. That's really all I have. We're thankful for the time and the efforts that the county staff has made for their review of the Moore Farms project. We're pleased that they've been able to recommend approval of the petition. It's our hope that the planning board will support the staff's recommendation as well. I'll certainly be glad to... I'll certainly be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
For members, is there any questions you would like to ask Mr. Ross at this time?
Just one quick question regarding the lots that face this main road. Is there any particular reason why you have them facing there when you've got the other lots that are along the side roads? Is there any benefit to having them facing that main road?
The simple geometry with the number of creeks that braid and cross through the project, I'd rather have five lots that front on the main road than one short dead-end cul-de-sac with, you know, side-load houses on the main road. I assume you're talking about the five and the three that are together there in the center of the project?
Yeah, you've got three together, and you've got five, and then you've got another four and five.
Right. What you don't really see here, the area, we're dedicating a riparian buffers along all the streams. So there's 100-foot separation from the top of bank where the yellow lots are and 50 feet on the minor stream. And I can point up here if you don't mind. I'll put my eye out here. So this is a major stream. So we've got 100-foot riparian buffer on each side there and off the wetlands. So that's why there's so much green space between these lots and those lots. This is only a 50-foot, we have 100 feet off of this pond, 50 feet off that stream, and 50 feet off that stream. So from a constructibility standpoint, the lots are facing the road. I'd rather do that than have a short dead-end cul-de-sac with three lots or four lots on it.
Any more questions, Mr. Ross?
Would, you said you've talked with the folks that are doing the transportation plan for the adjacent parcel?
I'm not aware of a transportation.
I'm sorry, that did the...
I have a site plan for the adjacent parcel that was done a couple of years back. It's not approved by the Town of Indian Trail, but it was a concept plan that we received and were asked to pick up and move forward with comments.
What were they planning on that road connection, off the main road into the, towards Wesley Chapel?
These would all be residential lots in this area. This would be in the Town of Indian Trail. The Wesley Chapel Indian Trail line is right about there. So these would be higher density SS5, single-family lots, which are very consistent with what we have in Wesley Chapel. These would be one-acre lots.
The road geometry is 760 foot wide?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry if I misunderstood. Yes, our intent was to align our geometry, the size of our road and everything with what was on that concept plan. I'm sorry if I misunderstood, Mr. Dugan.
Any more questions?
So, the 99 lots and the 78 lots and 24 lot areas, are those all single-family or...
Yes.
And what is the approximate acreage size lot?
What is represented here are three different sizes of lots, and we, let me back up just a moment. We are working with a number of builders. We think we have a letter of intent and a contract forthcoming. What are shown here, the product for, what most people refer to as the Epcun-type product is a 42-foot wide lot, which are what the tan lots are, and that's the smallest ones that we have. The 24s are a 51-foot lot, the orange, the 76s are a 61-foot wide lot. But those are very consistent with what the age-restricted community is accustomed to seeing.
And will they, will each group be the same builder, or will builders be mixed within each of those areas?
At this point, I believe there will be a single builder for all of it, but I would say, yes, at least each grouping would have its same consistent type builder. Yes, sir.
Yes, Brian?
What's the overall density? I don't know that we actually referenced that.
That's a great question. I believe it's 2.3. And right there, I won't misspeak. 2.34 is the overall density.
I think to Lee's point earlier, so to kind of keep this in mind, while there are certainly some smaller lot sizes, there's a lot of open space, there's a lot of green space, protected area, so the overall yield for the project is just over two units to the acre, which still meets our medium-density mixed housing requirement under our contract plan. So you look at it and you see and you hear the number of lots, and you may say, well, gosh, those are really small lots, but they are narrow lots. But the density on this is not, it's not an extreme density. It's only just over two units.
And you've got to consider the demographics of the people who be purchasing these homes also.
The intent is to push for the outdoor living style rather than the inside-the-walls-of-the-house living style. Yes, sir, that's a very good point, Mr. Matthews.
Any other questions? If not, we reserve the right to recall you, but at this point in time, excellent presentation.
I'll be right here. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Any discussion? Or the chair will entertain a motion?
I think, is there anyone?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Ma'am, would you like to come forward and speak in favor or in opposition? I apologize.
That's okay. I just wanted to know.
All right. You're more than welcome to speak if you would like. All right, thank you very much. The lady defers. All right. I'm not seeing any emotion on her face is the reason. I didn't feel like she was upset either way. At this time, we'll open it for discussion. I'd rather have a motion, and then we can discuss it after the motion.
I make a motion, we approve this project.
We have a motion, though here a second. And we've got a second. Members of the board, is there any, is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to see, you know, we, again, we spend all this time and money on studies to create all of these master plans, and if we don't kind of put these things into practice at some point, these master plans are really no good, and then it's just a bunch of waste of money. I'd like to see at least bike paths on that main connector through the, because it's gonna end up going into Indian Trail. Indian Trail's gonna, you know, see it. They might adopt the bike plan model, but again, it's, you know, this is kind of the first, one of the first conditional zonings that we had, the first opportunity to put something like this into practice. You know, we want to have a friendly biking community, and we want to have the ability to have traffic flow without being impeded by the biking community or endangering the biker community, depending on which way you look at it. But that would be my preference, is on that main road through, would be to have bike lanes.
Actually, I think Chris brings up a great point. You know, when you look at the amount of time that we've spent and the opportunity that we have here, I think it's a great opportunity to continue the whole active community, the whole outdoor lifestyle that you're talking about. It appears that there's enough room to do so, and it doesn't seem that it would be a major planned renovation required to do that. So I would definitely be in favor of something like that.
Mr. Ross, would you like to address that?
No, sir. I'd like to let the plan.
Speak for a second.
Yeah, I'm actually just trying to get the view back over where it's a little more accommodating for that discussion. I apologize for that. If I may, so the intent is, the suggestion is then to add essentially a bike lane on what is the thoroughfare, the one 60-foot right-of-way connector road going through? Is that what I understand?
Right.
I don't see how that would be an issue. I would like to be able to confirm with Indian Trail that their intent for their side of that, it doesn't indeed include a bike trail? I'm fine either way. I think it would be a shame if we built one and they weren't receiving one on their end. It'd also be a shame if they built one and we weren't receiving it on this end as well. Somebody's got to, I guess, draw the first line in the sand here, don't they?
Right, and I think if their plan hasn't been approved at this point, I think it's a good opportunity to work with them and say, hey, look at, you know, this is, this is what you all bought into as towns as well. You know, quite honestly, when they were asked to have input on these plans in this world, it all came up. So, you know, I can only see it as, if you're gonna have the interconnecting trail system, you're gonna have trail systems interconnecting from, what's that development, Hunter's Point or whatever it is.
You'll have a trail interconnection eventually with Hunter's Point and Brandon Oaks.
Right. Yeah, so why not have that ability to have all of those three communities?
Brandon, did I say Hunter Oaks? I meant Brandon Oaks.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, no.
I think it's, it would be a great thing to have all those communities, you know, have that access to, you know, again, we're talking about walking and exercise and all that other stuff. Why not provide at least a safe environment for the bikes? And again, it's the first shot that we have at it. I think we kind of put it into practice.
I agree, and again, being the first to have the approval, I think it's sort of incumbent upon this project to set that pace. If you don't, and Indian Trail says, hey, we had an opportunity and we missed it, then it's too late for everybody. And I think that, given that your project is luckily being presented first, you have that opportunity to do so, why not take advantage of it?
Do you make amendment to the motion? And we'll vote on the amendment first, that you would like to see it, if it would be conditional on the extension through the Indian Trail Plan Parkway?
I think on these conditionals, we have to get the developer to actually agree. It's not a quasi-judicial hearing, so you can't, you can't establish conditions without developer agreement.
But don't they have a period of time after the hearing to, like a 10-day process or something like that?
If the developer at this point's willing to say, I'm okay with that, then we can do that.
Just for a matter of clarification, is there a bike path standard that the county has adopted?
There is.
Do we know what we're actually talking about as far as...
There are some, there are some cross-sections in our, what they're talking about is the multi-modal transportation. Bike paths are one of the identified things we want. It's not identified on this type of road. It is identified more, and that's the kind of direction I wanted to steer, was on our, the plans that we've adopted, we don't call for bike lanes on this type of road. We call for it on major thoroughfares, Waxaw Indian Trail, Old Monroe Road, Secret Shortcut. We call for bike lanes on those types of road. These types of road, this is a collector's street, and you've got local streets that feed into that collector's street. Typically, you don't have bike lanes on a collector's street. That's not a typical thing you do. I'm not sure DOT has a cross-section for bike lanes on a collector's street. It's just not a, it's not something you see across the state.
Right.
You do see those types of cross-sections on major thoroughfares, such as, what I said before, Waxaw Indian Trail, Ray Road, those types of roads. You don't see them on this type of street.
And I get that. You know, my thing is, you're gonna have 257 units about, right? Just on this development, who knows how many is gonna go into the Indian Trail development? You know, I don't know how many houses are gonna be added on there, but you got 257 on this. The Indian Trail development that's gonna come up, Brandon Oaks is gonna be there. There's gonna be a lot of people that, and I get it that there's, it's not really gonna be a thoroughfare, but, you know, the way county property or the way property is bought in the county right now and the way it's developing so fast, I think this is going to become, and personally, I think it's gonna actually provide a benefit for the community, you know, the developers' proposed residence in this development, because then they have on this main collector road, a bike path that, you know, if you have the over 55 that, you know, are riding through the neighborhood and they get out to the collector road and want to continue riding around the neighborhood, on that main collector road, at least they have some kind of defined bike path for them. So, you know, that, I just would make the motion with the amendment that bike paths be created on this proposed future 60-foot right-of-way.
Do you have a stipulation that if Indian Trail also, if Indian Trail doesn't, do you still want a bike lane on that portion?
A bike lane to nowhere? We've had those bridges before.
I get it. You know, I don't know. I don't know necessarily why we would wait to see what Indian Trail does. If the bike lane runs out, then shame on Indian Trail for not providing that bike lane, is my opinion. But, you know, I'll just go with it as the motion to, amend the motion to create the bike lanes without the stipulation.
To answer your question, there are some standard widths that DOT recognizes for bike lanes on roadways. And then if you were to choose to have an off-road bike path, then you would have to obviously, so that we'll discuss the width of that and where that's located. Obviously, the easiest way to do it is to put bike lanes on an existing roadway.
Right.
But there are some standardized widths for bike lanes on roadways, and that's what we would defer to.
And you would anticipate, you would envision this being on one side, both sides of that thoroughfare? We've already got sidewalks both sides.
Right. I mean, generally, they're on both sides, they're not on the...
On the collector's street, I cannot imagine a bike lane on both sides.
They're not typically on the street of this magnitude. They're on Providence Road, they're on Old Charlotte Highway.
I completely understand. I mean, I think in this particular venture, if you were going to put it in, we'd probably recommend just one side versus both sides, because it's not the same as a thoroughfare. It's a collector, more of a collector than anything else. But if you had a dedicated bike path on one side, I think that would certainly be reasonable. That's the only, that's the best I can offer.
Sure, sure.
Unfortunately, there is...
And we want to be accommodating, we absolutely do. I think it's a very valid point, and we want to be as accommodating as we can. We don't want to build something that's not going to be used, obviously. If we could reserve the right to work with staff to identify what is that best opportunity, be it an extension of the asphalt or something behind the back of curb but off the sidewalk, if there's some way we could work toward finding what is a good solution to that, we're certainly willing to do so.
Would you be willing to accept that we work with what is the alternative? We provide bike access, but it may not be a defined bike path on the road, it may be off-road, but we're working with the developer to come up with what's the best solution for that particular roadway? Would that be agreeable to the board?
Well, yeah, I mean, as far as, as long as there is the ability to have that bike access, that's where I think my, you know, however you get there, you know, eventually you can have a white line painted down the middle and put that fancy little bike symbol inside that white line, so everybody knows that it's a bike path. And I think, again, I think it leads credence to the community, because you are gonna have, you know, the 55-plus that were bikers when they were not 55-plus, that still like to ride their bikes, and if they have a safe community to ride in, I think that's just an additional benefit for them.
Right.
I think if the board's willing to allow us to have some flexibility to come up with what's the best solution, that would be, that would be easier for the developer to accomplish, and we could also work with Indian Trail to make that work as well, if the board's helping with that.
We are, and I will need to get a vote from the board in order that, would you make an amendment to the motion that the board will work with the developer to, for the feasibility of bike paths and along with Indian Trail development?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second? We have a second. Any further discussion?
My motion's on the table, fellas.
Yeah, but now, we have to vote on the amendment first, do we not, sir?
Yeah, I think what you do is you want to make sure the amendment's good, so that then the amendment becomes part of the actual vote for the council.
All right. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, light sign.
Aye.
All right. Now, we'll go back to the main motion. The main motion made by Mr. Wing that we approve this conditional rezoning petition. Is there any further discussion? And this will be with the stipulation that the developer works with the staff for something that is feasible and reasonable.
For the bike, for the bike lane?
Right.
For the bike access?
That's right. No further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, light sign.
Aye.
All right.
Wait, just for clarification, that was for approval of the plan?
Approval of the plan.
With the bike path.
So you're voting against approval of the plan?
Because of the bike.
Okay, okay.
Total waste of money. One hundred percent total waste of money.
Yeah, but it's not, the county's money is the developer's money.
Still one hundred percent total waste. They will not, fifty-five plus people won't be riding on that bicycle path. Into nowhere. That other piece might not get developed. Who knows when and if it will get developed, so.
But even if it doesn't get developed, from a safety perspective, you still have a dedicated area that people can ride from their home onto a main, main or major thoroughfare to other areas of the subdivision. And I think one of the things that I see, especially in this county, that's lacking on, on some of these major roads, that they're just, you cannot ride a bike. You really have no room to ride a bike unless you go in your own subdivision. And this one looks large enough that you can get a pretty good, good workout within the subdivision. But I think crossing that, that main thoroughfare or being able to access that main thoroughfare without a bike lane would, would make it a little bit treacherous.
All right, and I'd like to make a comment. I think this is what conditional rezoning is all about. Thank you for submitting a concrete plan like this. I applaud y'all's walking trails and working with the Carolina Thread Trail. I applaud your efforts on that and I think this is an unbelievable tool that the county has given us to do rezonings with conditional uses. And so I think this is a prime example when everything works. Thank you very much, Mr. Ross.
Thank you and thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And ma'am, I apologize to you again, okay? Okay. Your smile makes it all right, okay? All right, at this time, I completely lost my agenda, so there you go. Planning staff report.
We've got several projects going on. We got a grant from CARPO for a critical intersection study. This was the outgrowth of our comprehensive transportation plan that was approved last fall, like in October, middle of November. We've got between the grant of about eighty thousand and twenty thousand from the county, about a hundred thousand dollars to do a critical intersection study. What that, the purpose of it is to identify intersections within Union County that needs improvement and also those intersections that are most likely to get funding. In other words, trying to identify the ones that need improvement, but also are good candidates for, for approval. We'll work with the county staff, we'll have an advisory committee, we'll have a couple of outreach programs to, from citizens and some stakeholder groups to try to identify, get a, get a potential list of those intersections. And from those intersections, we would look and the, the study would be based upon safety, crash statistics, causational factors, operational performance like congestion, the, the design of the intersections. And from that, come up with designs as far as the striping, the signing, the design of the intersections. And we'll have like, hopefully we'll have about fifteen of them, at least fifteen, and have these, basically a sheet for each fifteen that has all the information so that we can pull those out and give them to DOT for possible, possible funding. So that, that project should start maybe the end of this month, probably more than likely in December, we'll be gathering some data. So that's a, a project that's coming up that I think would be very important. Like I say, one thing is a, is an outgrowth for our transportation plan. One of the, the benefits of doing a transportation plan leads to other projects and hopefully get some funding for identification of those critical intersections. We're also working with the consultant that did our UDO. We're coming up with a, what's called a, a development guide. And it's basically a, a digest of our regulations and procedures that a applicant would likely encounter in trying to build something in Union County. It's signed to help them better understand our review process, the permitting process for development activities so that they'll have the information to make their project. So it's this kind of a, a user's guide that's a companion to our, to our UDO. We're working on that, that's coming up. The other thing that we'd like to do, it's been several, several years since we looked at our rules of procedure for the planning board and for the board of adjustment. We're going to be looking at those, make sure that they, you know, work with our, our UDO. Maybe there's some, some little tweaks or enhancements we should do, but just look at those, get those back to you, maybe for our next meeting. Y'all ought to go over them and see if there's some things that, that need to be changed to bring it up to date so it works a hand in glove with our, our new UDO. And the last, we've got one more project. Oh, yeah, we're, we're, we're starting, putting some information for our smaller area planning. We're going to kind of, getting some information so we maybe have some more information at our next meeting about potential smaller area planning projects that will be coming forward that will probably get going pretty heavy at the first of the year. So we've got the development guide, we'll be getting back, wanting to look at that. Like I say, will be a, a guide to help folks navigate through our UDO more easily, the critical intersection analysis, the small area planning and our, our review of our rules of procedure, both for the planning board and the board of adjustment. So those are a few things that are, that are underway. Hopefully we'll have more information, more involvement from the planning board either by our next meeting or first of the year.
Dick, did you ever mention the tax changes by chance?
I did not.
Okay. I'll mention to the board, you know, you had the tax change for the businesses not long ago. There was the, the animal boarding facility and the contractor's office with outside storage. Commissioners denied the tax change, but asked staff to work with the property owners to split the issue. And we're not comfortable with approving something that was as, as broad as it was. So they wanted to split the two issues, develop standards specific to contractor's office with outside storage, develop some possible standards for AB4 boarding facilities and then bring that back through the process. So we're working with the property owners and that will be coming back to you probably sometime, it may be December, that that will be coming back to you. Because that's to get back through the whole process, that's going to you, you review it, make a recommendation, then it goes back to the commissioners for public hearing and a vote. So I just want to make you aware that's, that's going. We will also have some other tax changes that we're just going to go ahead and just bring those forward as well, some of the things we discussed in the past with the accessory structures, adding the ability to have larger accessory structures on larger pieces of property. That'll be part of the tax changes and some other things that we've identified that, that are areas that we think we can improve upon. But I did want to make you aware about the, the two businesses that you dealt with.
Well, we all felt like we were dealing with apples and oranges that night when we had to make that decision. And it was really unfair to have to have them grouped together. So that will be good, we'll take them individually.
And just to give you an update on some past projects that have come before you, the athletic, Union Athletic Club, which was the conditional rezoning, it was first master plan development district, I think second conditional rezoning that you guys may have seen. It went to the commissioners and it was, it was approved. So that property was, was rezoned to the NPD for that athletic facility. And then the putt amendment that came before you guys for the indoor swim facility out on Tom Short.
Tom Short, right.
That went to Florida County Commissioners and it was approved as well.
Correct.
And you'll probably have some upcoming putt amendments to that same property and maybe some additional properties out there.
Those, those putt properties need to be developed? Have they been there long enough? All right. I will allow brief, brief comments by board members. Seeing none, hearing none? Do I hear a motion that we, that we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.